Did the video start?
Yes, yeah.
It's rolling. We'll call this meeting to order and start with a work session. Beginning with HRB goals, accomplishments, and work plan.
Not sure why we're not showing up there.
And that's right.
Something's gonna...
There we go. It was just taking its time. Gotta warm up. Okay. I brought up the 2018 goals that you all set last year. And I just wanted to, since this is our first meeting in 2019, take a look at our goals last year, talk about what we can kind of cross off our list, what we accomplished. And then if you all would like to change these or kind of keep the same goals for 2019, because we have some unfinished business on this list, so I'm sure we could probably fill up our 2019 with things from this list. I also, so we can look at that, but first Ken presented this, or Chair Basinger presented, our accomplishments, sorry, that's the wrong document, our accomplishments to the City Commission in earlier this month or in December, I think. So for 2018, just to let you guys pat yourselves on the back, we reviewed three applications for new construction, four applications for alterations, provided design advice for five potential projects. We had no appeal. We granted three, just over $3,000 for four local preservation projects. We awarded Ruth McBride Powers Preservation Award to McLaughlin Memorial Association and the Rose Farm Management Committee for their work to restore the Holmes House. We began our work sessions to revise HRB policies. We held a historic property owner open house in January 2018. We held a land use law training session with City Attorney Carrie Richter and mailed out over 400 historic property owner packets and brochures to property owners in the city. So, good job. Did you want to add anything to that?
I get a raise?
Did I miss anything?
Don't like a performance review.
He wants a raise.
Foolish.
I just figured I'd share that since we've shared it with City Commission. And then as far as our 2018 goals go, should I make this a little bit bigger so y'all can read it? Maybe I can. So Preservation Month, that is gonna happen again in 2019. So I would, I think in February, we can start talking about, you know, who might, who we might want to give the award to this year. Number two, that Certified Local Government Grant is a two-year cycle, so we applied for it last year. And it's a guaranteed grant, so every certified local government gets one. And so we wouldn't be applying again until 2020, but we are working on all this stuff still.
Yeah, we can do a review of where we are in terms of...
Number three, we have not made any progress on, so if you, that's something that maybe we could keep on the list for 2019. That's, there are at least a handful of landmarks that have actually been demolished, and so we need to kind of remove them from the list. Or they have an irretrievable loss of integrity due to, you know, changes, alterations made without board approval, more than likely.
So we do have several?
Yes, Christina had been keeping a list. So as far as I know, we don't have any to add to that list for, in the last year or two, but that's, it's been, she's been keeping track.
I was gonna say, how long ago was it?
It's been at least 10 years since we've...
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so there are a few properties.
Yeah, that should be updated so that we have that information online, you know?
Right, exactly. Number four, I actually have an update for you today about Willamette Falls Legacy Project. But I think this is on, you know, these projects are ongoing, so I would recommend keeping this on the list. Number five, revise the city website to be more user-friendly and include additional information. This, not much progress has been made here. I've updated a few items like the grant page, you know, to make sure that's up to date, the preservation grant page. But I, it could use more work. So I think that, that's something that deserves to stay on the list, if you all agree. Number six, policy discussions. We're working on that, and that's on our agenda today. And then public communications, we have a new staff on, city staff or communications coordinator. And so I think it would be great, a great task to maybe like this fall, summer and fall, especially because this mentions the first city celebration in July, to kind of work with that person, and her name's Kristen Brown. And maybe tackle this work item in the second half of 2019.
Also, we're, the city is celebrating the 175th anniversary, so I don't know if the city is planning any kind of a thing, but I think that would be a really good venue to have information on historic preservation program.
Yeah. So that's the end of the list. So any, we had heard some direction, anything else from the board?
Nothing more regarding 2018, other than that it's gone. So you're looking for additional items for 2019, then?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would suggest, we, I can just write 2018 to 2019 goals on here. And, you know, revise some of those dates, maybe add a bullet about the 175th, and then if you all have anything else to add?
Yes, I've had a couple people ask me about the paint program that the city used to have.
Okay.
And what it would take to resuscitate it, or...
The color palette.
Well, no, they had a program, Paul, way back when, where they paid a certain amount, you know? And it was, and it really, really, I mean, it really helped the McLaughlin neighborhood, I'm not sure about, were you back, were you here in that time period?
I'm cold on it.
Okay. But it was a pretty big program that they had, and a lot of people made use of it. And, you know, as Oregon City kind of grows in its, you know, popularity and, you know, with everything happening, it would be, because you drive around the neighborhoods, yes, a lot of houses have been painted, but there's a lot that could help, you know? And it was, ask Christina, I think...
Was it paid by the way?
No, it was, it was a grant program. And I guess before I brought it up, I should have gone back and looked. But it was, you know, you had to live in a designated structure, you know? And they paid up to a certain amount, or... But it was back in the, oh God, we moved here, it's, it would have been in the 80s, early 90s.
Well, it sounds similar to our current grant program, but what I've, I've had a few questions from people, like, can I apply for this grant for paint? And my answer, you know, I checked it on previous grants and, you know, talked with Christina as well. And I think the current, the current thinking, which could be changed, is that painting is, we consider normal maintenance. And so we don't offer the grant for painting.
And see, this, this program was just for, you know, paint, and they matched up to a certain amount. I mean, you still had, and they didn't pay for you to paint your house, but there was a matching grant type thing.
Well, I mean, we could look, look at our, we could look at our current grant program and, and look at what's eligible, and maybe revise that list if you think more like painting or other types of work should be eligible for the current grant. I don't know that we have a lot more resources to grant more money out, but, I mean, for example, right now, we still have money left in our grant cycle, and I haven't, I haven't received any applications in the past few months.
And I'm not sure who, you know, whether it was, I think it was, I want to say it was through SHPO, but, okay.
Can I make a comment on this?
We need a card filled out, I need to come up.
Yeah, I'll get it.
No.
Yeah, I'll get it.
Just mark how many times you come up tonight on there before you turn it in.
I'm, I think that in anything, Paul Edgar, anything we can do that can build pride back in, and kind of what I call investment. Because as we try to do these things, I think it's all win-win. And I know that there's plenty of houses in Kanema that, that need work or could do it. But I would also like to just take a moment to say, we are working on with a gentleman called Jerry Herman, to create a grant application to clean up all of the rite of ways in Kanema. And this would be, we have 20 feet of asphalt, the rest of the 60-foot rite of way is normally weeds and blackbirds. And when the city came through last year, they sprayed it with this Agent Orange-type products, and it killed everything, and then they left the blackberry just sitting there, dead. And so the idea, it was, this is like right on, we're coming off of South End Road onto Fifth Avenue, and it was really pretty terrible. And so the idea would be that we go together as a neighborhood and create this grant, and maybe through Metro, there's a Metro Nature in the neighborhood grant that's due at the end of the month. He's busily writing it. I've asked Ron if he would help review it with me and Jerry. And we're gonna, we're trying to do something that could enlist the neighbors of Kanema all, so we could build coalitions of, of people working together, building pride back into the neighborhood by betterment of the overall beauty of it. And correcting some stuff that's primarily, a lot of it, just city rite of way. And when it was reviewed with John Lewis, John gave a thumbs up and said, it sounded good to him.
So kind of like a localized solve?
What?
Like a localized solve program?
Yeah, it's, I don't know, that's, it's the weed growth, it's, it's the overgrown. It just comes all over everything.
I mean, that does help with the whole neighborhood, the field, but it doesn't, it's with the historic.
But it's, our whole district is, you know, basically a historic district, most of it. And so the idea would be to, kind of where Jerry said, suggested me, he said, if we could do like a thousand hours of his team, and maybe a thousand plants, native plants, into this stuff. And then we get the neighbors and the neighborhood associations, and the money would be going to a 501(c)(3), in this case, Kanema's, Friends of Kanema's a 501(c)(3). But we all do it as a team, so the Neighborhood Association, Friends of Kanema, Jerry's nonprofit, we're all working together, and we're trying to then get maybe 5,000 hours of neighbors, neighbors involvement, getting in. This becomes a neighborhood project to go through it. And it would be great if we could get a grant from, from, from the city too, as part of helping fund this, because this would be a major benefit program to enhancing a National Register District in its entirety and trying to, and pulling people together as a coalition of doing good. Anyway, I'm hoping that we can talk...
This is a, is a good idea, but it's kind of outside of what we do.
Well, it could be a grant, it could be part of one of these grants to help fund the extent of the project, because if we can, it's how do we do these things to, in conjunction with the HRB and a National Register District and everything? How do we do it all together? And no one's got this thing written down in black and white yet, we're still working on it.
Have you addressed the City Commission?
We will, we will have to, I'm sure, but at this point, we're, we're busily writing as fast as we can.
I agree.
Well, I think it's something that we can support, but it's outside our purview, I think.
I think if there's a specific, like if the City Commission is writing a letter of support, I would...
Or approaching the parks.
I would suggest that the Historic Review Board could potentially write a letter of support as well, but I think we'd want to see like the city...
Parks.
Apartment or something like that.
We will, but we're gonna, everybody's gonna be able to review it.
And there used to be bumper stickers out there that said, "Take pride in Oregon City." I still have one. So...
It's on your 68th one or something, right?
I have one that says, "I found it."
It's what?
"I found it."
You don't remember that? Come on, you're old enough to remember that. "I found it?" Anyway, I know you're too young, maybe you're, oh, never mind.
So what I heard is that we can just add 2019 to this, kind of keep the list?
Yes.
And then maybe add a bullet to this last public communications one to talk about how we can co-coordinate with, or co-schedule things with the 175th celebrations.
Perfect.
And even doing it during the National Preservation Month, you know, kind of...
Right, yeah, yeah, so I plan to bring some more information to you in February, March about Preservation Month. And then, just so you know too, the Certified Local Government Grant, you know, we had these three items. Number two, that we applied for, but that, you know, we can always change our projects or modify our projects throughout the grant cycle. And I'm thinking about trying to, you know, if we can, if we don't need all of the funding for those three items, trying to use some of it to hire, potentially hire an intern for the summer that can help us with that kind of stuff, like creating materials and handouts and, you know, just public educational materials. And especially regarding the new policies, because we'll have the policies updated, I think, by then. So if we want to get the word out about those, then an intern can help us do that. So I might be revising our grant application to, to try and fund that.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Okay.
Item three on the agenda is solar panels, building materials, fences, and whatever else.
It was interesting reading the stuff that you sent.
Yeah. If you don't mind, quickly, I can go over the timeline for the policy updates?
Good.
Great. So we have, we've already had a few work sessions. The next item would be just a quick announcement and an update to the CIC at their next meeting. Just kind of, this is happening here, is how to get involved, we're not gonna get into any detail. February 21st, there's Kanema Neighborhood Association that I, I'm planning to attend. We have another opportunity for a work session on the 26th of February. And then March 7th, McLaughlin Neighborhood Association has a meeting that I'm attending. And then April 2nd, where there's a public open house, and so in March, I'd be sending out a mailer to everyone that owns a historic property, to let them know they can attend that. And then April 23rd, I can present to you all of the input and feedback that we've heard. And then you all can kind of give direction on, on that, based on the, the feedback from the community. And then by May, we should be able to have a public hearing to adopt any policy changes that we want to adopt. I'm not sure if a City Commission resolution is necessary, but if it is, then we'd do that in June. So then we'd have those policies up and running, so to say, by, by June.
And that's when the webpage would go live?
Well, I have, on the, there's a current webpage with all the policies. And I have this list essentially, well, I have a version of this list, you know, to let people know that they can come to the HRB work sessions, they can come to the Neighborhood Association meetings if they want to learn more. And then I plan on posting drafts as, on that page, as we are ready to post them, so that people can access those drafts online and read through them. And then, of course, we'd update the webpage when everything's said and done. So I'll be going to Kanema Neighborhood Association before we meet next. So the information that, that I put in your work session item is pretty much the information that I would take to Kanema next month, with any, if there are any changes that you'd like, that we identified tonight, that I can add before doing that. So I think it's, I think it's actually really good, because we don't have a, we don't have anything that's really even close to being in the oven yet, fully baked. So I think that's a good time to go to the community so that we can get feedback early on. Any questions about that, the schedule?
It can be busy.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. And let's see. And what's next?
Well, I'm looking at, down now to sample guidelines for solar systems.
All right, we can talk about that. Would you like me to bring those up?
Well, I have it here.
Jeez. I'm glad you know where it's at.
Right.
Did you read this in your email or members, so you know what's here?
Yep. Yeah, so my question for you guys tonight is really, did any of these strike you as appropriate for Oregon City? And if so, when I go out to the neighborhood associations, I can kind of highlight those that you think might be appropriate?
Yeah, based a little bit on the discussion that we had at our last meeting about solar panels on historic houses. I thought that these guidelines were pretty loose, really, compared with, with what I felt was public sentiment in Oregon City. Even though we voted to allow the, the panels on that particular house. So I don't know. It's these solar shingles maybe that offer the best future opportunity, but I don't know that they're there now.
And I noticed that in, you know, some of the, in that Preservation Leadership Forum article, it said that there's currently 34 steps, 34 states that have some kind of regulations governing solar access and solar rights. Do, is Oregon one of those?
Not that I know of.
Oh, okay. So I, so there's nothing that we really can... And so has SHPO?
You know, I contacted SHPO when we had the application a couple months ago. And they, you know, they didn't have anything specific to give me. But then I shared, you know, we, I shared with you the guidance from the Secretary of Interior on that, and I ended up sending that to them and saying, hey, this was really helpful to us.
Are you serious?
Yeah.
Wow.
But I mean, I think what, what I got from SHPO was simply, you know, on primary facades, they're, they've generally been found to not be appropriate. And, and that if they're, you know, on a rear facade or not visible from the rite of way, that those are the instances in which they would be appropriate. And so that's, I mean, that's kind of what we had said at Design Advice, I think. So they didn't really add much to what the board was discussing.
It's just in some of these articles, I mean, some, some communities have kind of, you know, fought back as far as, you know, property values and, you know, and trying to be, you know, zero impact and stuff.
I think it'd be really interesting to hear what the community has to say.
Well, you have two competing aspects of social responsibility here. Historic preservation and energy.
But I think that the solar energy, or the solar panel industry is, I think they're waking up to the fact, you know, just in reading this, of, you know, that they have to make, instead of having these, you know, aluminum or, you know, light colored things, having the, having the darker panels. And in one of them, they, the couple had gone through and had done, had changed their roof too, and made it dark so that it wouldn't, you know? And then having the lower profile and stuff, so... But I think it's a very salient topic right now. But, yeah, I... I think our main focus is just the, having it on the secondary elevations. But do we want to put any more meat into it, or just take it on a case-by-case basis? Which we would anyway.
Right, right, so right now...
Just having some guidelines.
Right, right, right now, I think almost everything comes to the board, unless it very clearly is on a rear facade and does not...
Or accessory building.
Yeah, and it's not visible, you know, I think that might, we haven't had any of those. I mean, I haven't approved anything at a staff level, you know? You've seen everything that people have been proposing. But I think more and more, we might see, as solar is cheaper, we might see people interested in doing this. And so the policy would spell out when staff can approve a solar installation and when they have to come to the board, so that maybe you wouldn't have to see every single request. Only the ones that, you know, are maybe a gray area or are on a primary facade or are very visible from the rite of way. So, you know, kind of, can we put a box around what would be allowable without board review?
Well, it's good to have all of that ready if we are gonna be getting, you know, those type of applications and stuff.
I don't see it as a high-volume thing, and I think we're beating ourselves up if we try to make a one-size-fits-all rule.
Right.
One last my question is, is it lack of rules or lack of any kind of structure that's...
We don't have anything.
...in the applications?
We don't have anything, do we?
Is there anything that would say that's, that people aren't? Is there, is there any signs that are saying, if these, if there were guidelines in place, then we would have more structure to apply for?
Or they know, kind of know what the parameters are?
Yeah, because it is so, because nothing is really in existence that, it's not encouraging people to, to look into it.
But I think as more and more, you know, you hear about solar a lot more than you did, say, five years ago. And so I think it's, you know, something that...
Well, like the, the shingle panels, I mean, that, that's fair. That's fairly new.
Yeah. I'd never even heard of those.
As you just saying, the huge solar arrays. The technology is changing very fast.
Right. But I think it's wise that we have some type of a, you know, at least skeleton-type policy, you know?
And would that be just, everything comes before the board for the, you know,
Unless
Forstable future?
Unless it's on a, you know, secondary secondary fence, you know, side or on a detached building.
Mm-hmm, or like the ground mounted in the backyard, for example.
Those just to me, to me, that's like an invitation for kids in the neighborhood. I'm sorry, it's just
Or start at your house.
Well, no, but still, I just, it's like, those are, I don't know.
Could you imagine a pole's panel on a Antworth House?
If it's not visible on that one, right?
So
Well, I can bring kind of this document or, you know, I can take the bullets out of this document and create something that, to take to the neighborhood and take to the open house. Or I guess I'll see you guys again before the open house. So, you know, maybe we can, you know, work on it a little bit more than. But as far as going out to the community and asking for input, I can take the information from this and then kind of what Claire just said, you know, maybe when it might be appropriate to, to use or to not have to ask permission from the board.
And have it very clear so that, you know?
Yeah, so we can, I can kind of take that out and get comments on it. If that most of those are
Yeah, on the road browser, not the
On secondary facades or frontages, the board's going to approve it.
Huh?
Where is it?
That, that probably would be a safe thing to approve over the counter.
On presentation? Oh, I have to look that.
You get into the gray areas like the one last month where the secondary elevation
Is on a street, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think
On a corner lot, and we have lots of houses on corner lots in the city.
Yeah, I think that we need, I think it makes sense to define what's allowable on a staff level very narrowly so that people know when they need to get to the, go to the board.
Yep.
Or that, does that indicate that maybe we need to initial policy? Is that everything comes to the board until we see what?
Well, that is, I mean, that that's by default, that is the current policy.
If there is no policy, it comes to
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Or, I mean, there is a policy that alterations that meet the Secretary of Interior standards can be approved by staff. So when something clearly meets the Secretary of Interior standards, then staff can approve it. I just haven't had any specifics requests about solar that have really fit that bill. But, you know, that's the policy right now that governs it. But we can get more specific about solar panels, like we do about a lot of other things, like roofs and foundations and windows. So I think it's helpful to have specific policies because, you know, the public better understands what they can and can't do. But then also, when people are able to do things without coming to a public hearing, I think that makes them happier and maybe more likely to support the preservation program. If they see it as a protection, you know, for our, our resources rather than this regulation that is making me go to a public hearing. If that makes sense.
One more comment, can I? On this? I would like to, on the goals document that you have here on page, the next page of it, there's a statement in here that says, according to the Secretary of Interior standards for rehabilitation, additions such as fences should be compatible with the size, scale, material and character of the properties and the neighborhood and the environment. I wouldn't, this was talking about fences, but by not looking at this statement as to the material like a solar panels, it's, it is how it is introduced, if it is non-compatible like in a district as a whole. Then I, to me, by reading this statement, it would make solar panels subject to that same type of Secretary of Interior standards. And so there's a compatibility issue of it and introduction of something new that changes. You know, we, right now, we have this deal where we say the front fence should be of forty-two inches of height and the side yard fence should be of forty-two inches. And so we also have to take a look at the materials in that same side, say, okay, I look at the front and on a corner side lot, I'm also looking at it from the side. And what do I see? And I should not be subjecting new materials or design changes that alters the perception of what they, of what they're trying to maintain as a district standard. And so if I take that, this comes along and says, okay, solar panels could also equally fall into that type of, of phraseology of what is in the Secretary of Interior's statement in that paragraph.
I think that's what we're talking about.
Yeah. So we don't have much longer of our work session. I would I've got a couple more things.
I think that if you, if you wanted to take one product that you could probably approve over the counter, it would be the solar shingles.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, because there, I mean, unless you knew what you were looking at.
And I say that with caveat because I've never actually seen them in action.
Yeah.
Well, as long, you know, and I'm not sure what kind of color variations they have, you know, as to whether they're all dark or whatever or something, you know, to where they don't jump out at you. I think that's just the, you know, so that it's not
Yeah, the traditional ones
Yeah.
Yeah.
They just look all wrong on a historic house.
Yeah. Can we quickly touch on materials? Or
Materials
Do we have more on, oh, I'm sorry, the next policy topic?
The next item on, on the list that you're, you're talking about, the
Well, I don't have a, an attachment for it, but in the commission report here, let me try and make that bigger too. So this part right here, we frequently get questions from, from property owners about materials. You know, can I, can I use this in my deck replacement or my porch repair or, or, you know?
But that would be a separate, we want to
Right, the next one.
Oh, yeah, did you have more on solar?
I did, I have one other thing. In the policy or whatever you're going to write up, do include this not recommended for any reason? You know?
Okay.
Make sure that that's included. Because if it's not said, they can read anything they want into it.
Yep.
They are, but I mean
No, no, I said by not stating
Right.
Maybe
Right, this is just, you know, I think we do need to include that.
Okay. All right, sorry, I jumped ahead there.
Sorry.
So right now, the policies, you know, talk about the Secretary of Interior standards and, and they only allow wood siding, wood decking, wood windows, including aluminum-clad wood. So, and that is, that, those policies apply to all designated structures and all of Kanema, even, you know, and even new construction or non-compatible buildings in Kanema. So, you know, for example, when Mr. Beisline, you know, who has new, new construction in Kanema, asks, can I use Trex decking on my back deck, for example? The policy's saying no, that he has to come to the board to ask for that. So, so, and we get those questions all the time. So I have this list here. We can maybe add to it if anyone has any other, you know, materials that we could consider. But I think it might be worth considering, you know, are there times when we would allow these materials at a staff level approval? So composite decking, fiberglass-clad wood windows, fiberglass windows, Fibrex, which is a composite material made with wood and
Wood and vinyl.
And, yeah, vinyl.
Forty percent wood fiber and sixty percent vinyl, according to Anderson.
And that's Fibrex, is that what?
Fibrex.
Fibrex is the Anderson
Yeah. It's a brand, yeah.
Oh.
Fibers meant siding and, you know, anything else that you all identify.
I thought the I thought policies were changed so that you could still, you could use wood siding.
So that's, so new construction, we allow that, but if
Over old construction, you did not?
Replacement.
Right, for replacement. So for example, a house in Kanema that isn't a contributing structure, these policies still apply.
Okay.
You know, I think the question is, you know, should, should they always apply? Can, can we, or do we, do we want to make everybody go to the board to ask for permission to use hardy plank siding, for example? So I am, so at the next meeting, I can bring samples of these materials if you guys want to see them. If you, I can just bring everything or if there are specific ones that you want to see, let me know.
Some of them I think we're pretty familiar with, hardy plank. I don't know that there's anybody who doesn't know that. And I don't know if we need to see samples there. And the same might be true of composite decking because I'll pretty much know what that is, even though there's a wide variety
Brand, yeah.
In, in the way it looks.
So maybe the windows?
But the, the three window frames you've stated here, I think it'd be really helpful to see
Best to see, yeah.
Okay.
Hands on those three.
Okay, I can do that.
We're moving in a direction where just reality and practicality
Cost.
Are making wood less available to the broad general public because of cost.
Cost, yeah.
And it seems like we need to recognize that shift and state what alternatives are acceptable. Otherwise, we're just not going to be able to build.
And what, what is the, you know, the Secretary of Interior standards, you know?
Yeah, and I can, I can look into that a little bit.
Just to see, you know, just to get some direction. And if, and if SHPO has any direction on any of that? Because, you know, why reinvent the wheel?
Yeah, I think a lot of these more modern products aren't addressed, you know, by the Secretary of Interior standards. And so that's kind of why there's always been this question. But I will check and see if there's any guidance for any of these.
Or absolute, you know?
Right.
No type thing. Because I think we've been lucky. And actually, you know, there's I've seen some alterations and things going on that people just go merrily about their way, you know, doing it. And again, you know, the education factor of that. Because then somebody down the street is going to say, he did it. Why can't I?
Exactly.
So we need to have some policy on that.
And then I shared the fence policy draft with you all. And that is what I would bring to the neighborhoods, unless you all have any, if you have any red flags or something, anything you want to add to that before it is shared more widely.
I have, I don't know if this is, because on your, as far as the wood picket on the side, is picket spacing appropriate? Is there any, as far as safety? As far as, is there any kind of an, I don't know if it would be OSHA or
Yeah. For porch railings, there is. I mean, it's, I think, four inches. But for fences, I don't think there's
There's no, okay. And oh, on the what are hedge slats?
We actually have a code enforcement case right now regarding those. But it's just, you know, the metal slats that you can put in your fence?
In, you mean, in like the chain link fence?
Yeah, so these are slats that you can put in instead of metal or plastic. They're like made of like fake greenery.
Gotcha, okay.
And so it makes the fence look kind of like a hedge. So, so I don't know, I guess my question, you know, to everyone is, should that just be considered in the same category as chain link or
Because it's just trying to disguise it, right?
Yeah, or, or maybe is that something that we want to discuss separately? As, you know, maybe that's appropriate in some cases where chain link wouldn't be appropriate? Or, or is it essentially the same? So
Look and see. And then the other thing was the concrete block as far as a fence, but if it's a low wall?
Like a lane for landscaping?
Yeah.
I think if it's along the edge of a
In the front?
Of somebody's yard, then we consider it a retaining wall. If it's retaining, you know?
Okay, so there's, so there's, to me, that should have some again, parameters, I mean, you know, address whether it's a retaining as opposed to a fence or wall or whatever.
So maybe define wall?
Up to a certain
When you say retaining wall, it implies a structural element that a fence doesn't have.
Right. But should there be a limit on height as far as?
I think there is.
There is, okay.
Yeah, it's the forty-two inches.
Okay, so the same, hmm. Yeah, I don't know if, I have to look up hedge slats, see what.
Yeah, I've never seen them.
I don't, I mean, that doesn't even begin to ring a bell. They have them available at Home Depot.
So are there any edits you'd like me to make to this before it goes out?
Not really.
Well, and you have a, you have question marks for hollow, twisted and mixed material.
Right.
That's a definite
I, well, the question marks are there because I don't know what that refers to at all. And I'm at a loss for how to define it. And so I added definitions for all of these, but I could not begin to guess what we were getting at there.
Well, they're building, they're replicating wrought iron using steel tubes or maybe aluminum tubing.
And I've never seen, I've never seen that been used for a fence. And that's why I was confused. I've seen it used for like a railing on a front porch, but I've never, or like a stair. But I've never seen it used as a fence. So that's what I was kind of wondering about.
Yeah, I've seen them, you know, on the railings and stuff.
I've seen it in metal fences, but you wouldn't know to, to look at it as a casual observer.
Okay.
You'd have, have to actually go up and, and touch it to know that it's, that it's hollow
Yeah.
And not solid.
Solid.
And in that respect, I don't know that it, that it's objectionable if, if it, if it looks the same.
Usually, when you see it, it's more being used as railings and, you know, that type of thing. So that's the hedge?
Yeah.
That's bizarre. I'm sorry. I I, hmm, it's like a fake Christmas tree.
I think I would like to say no to that.
Yeah.
To me, it did.
Well, you might have, you might have one come before you because we have a code enforcement case, so.
Great, we'll need samples.
So it looks like leftover Christmas tree, fake Christmas tree branches won't, I'm sorry, that's.
Repurposing.
Hmm?
That's repurposing.
So maybe I could add the definition for hollow-twisted wrought iron to just be, you know, iron fences hollow and twisted, um, because it sounds like we do.
It's just made out of tubular steel instead of solid bar.
Yeah.
Mixed material diagonal boards, I don't see where a diagonal board fence would ever be compatible historically because diagonal hadn't been invented then during the period of significance. I really think that's pretty easy. Uh, mixed brick, wood, and vinyl. Yeah, there are, there are mixed material, brick and wood. I think we're already clear on vinyl.
Right.
Whether it's mixed with something else or not, so.
Would it make more sense to change that to just diagonal board fences and?
Yeah, and just, I, I would say just, that was not appropriate.
That's appropriate.
Yeah, well, this is in the list of not appropriate, right?
Yeah, okay.
Not acceptable. So, so maybe I'll just redline this and, and take out the mixed material and the parentheses and just say diagonal, any diagonal board, um, wood or otherwise.
And then on the back page, you have the fences and walls not addressed in the current policy.
Uh-huh.
Um, I don't know what we came to when we talked about it before, but.
Horizontal board seems to be, uh, something that's been gaining popularity.
Yeah, I've seen a couple of them go up. But the non-basalt stone, I, hmm. I don't think that we, the gab, gabian?
Gabian?
Gabian, okay. Um, I don't know if that would be appropriate, or the chicken wire and stuff, but.
So you can choose to add these to the not allowed list or not acceptable list?
Should we, before we get something?
I thought the gabian already was.
Was, yeah.
Uh, no, the, these are, the, the policy is silent on these, so all of these types currently would come to you for review.
Okay.
Unless they were, you know, totally obscured with, uh, like some sort of, um.
Landscape stuff or whatever.
Yeah, or basalt, um, sorry.
But should we address these or, or not? I mean, what are the, I think the recycled concrete, I've seen that here and there, you know, and I think of all of them, that would probably, um, be one that I think we would have. I don't know. I don't know if it's worth, or do we just cross that bridge when we get to it?
I definitely don't want to turn the water.
You could see what the community input is and then, you know.
So they would look at this and, I mean, the way, you know, once you've addressed, um, some of the things we've said, and then just, um, get their input on this?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, and so the, yeah, the question for.
Might put ideas into some people's minds, I'm sorry.
Sorry?
I said, might put some ideas into people's minds, so we probably don't want to have, anyway.
Non-basalt stones, I've seen some red lava rock sneaking in, trying to make us look like Arizona, I guess.
Well, if it's available out there, I mean, you know, that's.
They sell it at the.
Home Depot or, or the, down here.
Well, that, the Flacamas.
Yeah, Flacamas rocks. So, yeah, I think, hmm.
Just wait for comment, public comment?
Yeah, I think that would be good, just wait for public comment and just see what the, the feel is for that. What do you think?
Yeah, um, I know that, that there are things that, that violate some of these rules already in place.
Mm-hmm.
The people who built my house in nineteen ninety-four put smooth poured concrete walls. Well, they, they, yeah, they, they sprayed on a gunite finish, but.
God, that was pretty common.
Right there, that's what I have.
That might have been approved as new construction.
Probably, probably. I hope, I hope.
So this is basically the things that would be used on designated structures or within the.
Or within the National Register District.
District, but not with new construction.
Right, new construction always comes to you.
Okay.
Right, so people can request.
So this is just, yeah, on properties, okay, right. Then, yeah, I think they should come. But some of these, like gab, gab, gabian?
The reason people do gabian walls is, it's inexpensive. It's inexpensive, generally easy to do, doesn't require masonry skills or any such thing, very stable. If you're trying to hold back a hillside, it's a darn effective way to do it. Ugly.
Yeah.
But it works, and that's why people, that's why people wanna do it. It's, it's practical and it works.
Is there any place in Oregon City that has it?
Mm-hmm.
There is?
Unfortunately so, yes. Brand new ones.
Kena too, right?
Hmm?
Kena too, right?
Right across the street from your place, there's, where, where they just put them in, and I, I believe that there's code enforcement action underway regarding that.
My understanding is that those are gonna be covered with basalt veneer.
And that's what I think is, is appropriate. I mean, I, I have, I have no objection to something that's ugly as long as it's well hidden.
So basically like building a chimney with, you know, concrete block inside and then having a facade of like traditional brick, like what we did for the Amesworth House? Okay, yeah, so you don't really know what's on the inside.
The discussion maybe should be what kind of fascia material is appropriate regardless whether the wall is made of poured concrete, gabian materials, or what. I have it in, uh, I know that there's a property on Third Avenue where there's a high retaining wall, which is backfilled with plastic foam, huge foam billets. That's on the property where the house, where the new house burnt down.
Okay.
Years ago, five, six years ago. Um, and they recently cleared it in preparation for rebuilding the house, cleared the brush away, and that, that tall retaining, well, it isn't actually a retaining wall. Well, it is because up above that's level ground and down below it's vertical. Um, and I'm assuming that that was approved at the time it was done in around twenty-ten or, or twenty-eight. But it really isn't, doesn't look real.
The stones? Yeah.
And it's, it's mixed right in with the historic basalt walls that have been there forever, and I find it, if, if I were ruling on it, I, I wouldn't favor that.
Mm-hmm.
But it's there.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't see it until they cleared the brush.
Yeah, but it was put there as part of the original construction. I, I remember it from, from the time. Marveling that you could have that huge volume of plastic foam, I don't know. I don't know why it didn't burn when the house did, or at least melt down.
Um, just noticing it's seven o'clock.
Yes.
We do have dinner, but I, my suggestion would be to start the, the seven o'clock meeting and then pause it.
I would agree. Makes me happy. We have one item.
Yeah, especially considering the applicant isn't here yet, so.
Oh, cool.
Since the applicant isn't here yet, maybe, maybe we should.
Okay.
Adjourn for ten, fifteen minutes.
Guys.
And if they walk in the door two minutes from now, take advantage.
Just have them delay, just open at seven fifty.
Yeah, I, I think that's appropriate, so.
Because I was just asking. Oh.
I'll wait. Go ahead.
No, no.
Speak. No, no, okay. We will, we will open the, uh, the public meeting at seven fifteen.
Okay.